Brings us to 4.2, which is Presentations, Public Comment on Items That Are Not on the Agenda. And my board shows eight speakers. Is that in agreement with yours, Beth?
Yes.
Okay, so that's three minutes each. I will call your names, but it's only as good as your penmanship was for Beth to enter. So if you could please make sure you're sitting up in the front row. Josephine, followed by Joni, followed by Jean. This is the microphone right here, so Josephine is first. Is there a Josephine?
Yeah.
Yeah, we try not to lose two. Yeah, so if you could just please be all ready to go, if you know you're speaking. Who is Josephine?
Actually, I'm not Josephine.
Okay.
I'm not Josephine.
Okay, then you can introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenny Silva. My colleagues and I all live in Santa Clara County and are volunteers with United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans, USA, is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing the alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past elections. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with the summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid elections seriously by adding it, by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so Beth, was that a speaker? That was one of the eight? Yes. Okay, so now it's Josephine?
Hi, good evening. My name is Josephine Kawonami, and I am here to read into the record for the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas, it is recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas, the analysis of California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations, 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them, 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracies for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni M.
My name is Joni Murphy, and I am here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas, the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked, secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean R.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Jean, and I am here to read into the record the last section of the USA Resolution. Six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to file canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant, randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved, that the Gilroy City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and County Registars of Voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Teresa Higginson.
Good evening. My name is Teresa, and I am here to conclude our presentation. What you heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniteforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization on our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. One more time, unite, the number four, freedom.com. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Jim Wyatt, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community. I would really like to thank you folks for coming and speaking today. I have a personal issue with exactly what you're doing. My youngest son is now 39 years old. When he was living at home, he applied to get a, to vote by mail, and he continues, he's been married and gone out of my house for several years, but I continue to get ballots for him. I've returned the ballots to the original address they came from, saying they don't, my son doesn't live here anymore. He's married, he's living in another state. But nothing ever changes. There's no way that a person that I know of, that a person can find out how to get somebody off the rolls. So this is a very important group for our quality of voting to keep our voters, our elections safe and qualified. So I really appreciate you guys, and I'm going to contact you soon. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 11.1, Request to Add to the September 16 Agenda, the United Sovereign Americans Resolution. So needs a decision by the council. So who's, Bryce, are you speaking on this?
Just really briefly just to announce it. So we did receive a fair memo or a future agenda, future agenda item request memo to, for the council to consider adding to the September 16 meeting a resolution in line with the United Sovereign Americans' presentation of their proposed resolution that they introduced via public comment at previous meeting. The assessment in the staff report on the cost is accurate as far as low cost. It's some staff time to prepare it if, if should, should council determine to proceed with that. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, a couple weeks ago, a group came and asked us if we would go ahead and pass a resolution. They brought us a resolution, and I believe in fair and equitable elections. And I'm not saying that anything was wrong with our other elections, but I would like to see if we're interested in getting on board with other cities. There's, they have, according to them, 20 states that have also pushed through this. And I just would like to have a chance to have the council discuss it, to see if they want to accept it as is or part of the resolution, or just basically supporting fair and equitable elections.
Mayor.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Tovar, and then I see Councilmember Hilton after you.
Thank you, and thank you for those comments, Councilmember Marks. So I'm a little confused here because any requests is there's no staff time and no cost, and I just heard there's very little. So there is some cost and staff time involved with this, correct, Bryce?
I think Jimmy will go ahead and answer that, yeah.
That, the cost is the same it would be, would be for any council member who did a council-initiated item. So the preparation of the one-page staff report is city staff.
Right. Okay. And, you know, again, I don't have any problem having a discussion on this, but I'm just a little concerned because, and I remember, you know, in reading what they said and going back and listening to what they said, but, you know, am I missing something? Have we had any issues with fair and accurate elections here in Gilroy that we would even want to consider this?
So I think that's getting in, well, I know, I think that's what has to be, we can't discuss it here because it's not actually on the, I mean, this is so confusing. It is on the agenda, but not on the agenda.
Right. No, I understand. I'm trying not to show the lying here.
But that's the point. It's, everybody's going to have to decide, should this be something that the council discusses or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. So I have a clarifying question. So Councilmember Marks, you said that you believe that the, that there hasn't been any issues with fair elections or?
I'm not saying that there are or there are not. I'm, this is for the council to discuss if they want to do it. We had a group of citizens that asked for this to be put on the agenda, and I felt that as a representative of all citizens that we owe them that much. And now it's up to us to say if we want to go any further with this.
So one of the, one of the lines actually says, whereas California's 2022 general election appears to have been invalid.
So, okay, but see that, remember what I said a little bit ago? Accept all of it, accept part of it, except it's up to the council to do whatever. I'm not telling you that I agree 100% with it.
Yeah.
I am saying that we were asked if we would consider a resolution. I am listening to what the constituents brought forth, and it's up to this council what they want to do.
I would just like to say, I understand you're, you're next to speak, Councilmember Armandares, but when it comes to the wording, that's up to us. All that was presented by the group that came to speak was their suggested wording. We get suggested wording all the time. It doesn't mean that's the wording we adopt. So the question isn't that wording. The question is having, having, doing a resolution at all on this subject and having it brought for the council to discuss. Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Thank you. Two points. We have rejected time and time again any resolutions that are not germane to our roles as a city council. We've rejected them, refused to even discuss them, so I want to remind us of that. And this feels very much like that, given that we have a Department of Justice, an Office of Civil Rights, a county registrar voters, a Secretary of State, a district attorney, and others at the federal, state, and county levels that assess these things. And our own Attorney General and our own Secretary of State in their reports on voter fraud have found nothing of the sort in the data that is not even quoted or cited in this resolution. And so I have, have a hard time us entertaining it because it's based on a premise that there is some type of rampant voter fraud, and we're not getting that from our, our experts.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, just one last comment. Sorry, just to kind of comment on, and thank you, Councilmember Marks. You mentioned that, you know, you listen to the constituents, obviously. I think we all do, and I think every week.
Those folks work from Gilroy. Okay, let's not interrupt.
I'm sorry. You know, and I think, again, I think we hear from constituents every week on different items or different things that they would like to see on the agenda. So, again, I'm just curious as to why this one here, because we hear from constituents all the time, and we don't, you know, we're not throwing everything out there for discussion or put on the agenda. So I do have, again, I do have some great concerns about having a discussion on this, so I'll look at it.
So we have, I want to commend Councilmember Marks for following the process. We have a process. That's why we installed the process. She's followed the process. She's bringing it here for everybody to ask. Everybody's going to feel how they feel about it, but the, the process has been followed. Okay? And that this is how you ask to get something on the agenda. Okay, so if there's no other discuss, is this something I need to ask for public comment? Oh, I do. Public comment?
No public comment.
Okay, no public, well, if you want to, public comment needs to be known up here. If you would like to please let our city clerk know that you want to speak, that's, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to let the city clerk know, and then yes, we, we.
Sue, Sue, was it?
Can you, public comment is absolutely welcome. We just don't know about it unless you've let the city clerk know. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and you have three minutes, and the clock is, should be visible.
Okay, we'll use that long. My name is Sue Bizini, and I'm a volunteer for United Sovereign Americans, and I want to speak in favor of adding the resolution to your city council meeting next week. Many Californians question the trustworthiness of our elections. What you heard in your previous council meeting was a powerful resolution that outlined the massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. Federal law outlines strict standards that must be followed in a federal election. This is a federal election. From, starting with specific requirements for valid voter registrations, we shared that in the 2022 general election, there were over 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registrations on the California State voter rolls. Of those, over 2.7 million voted in that election. There were almost 124,000 more votes counted than voters who voted. And because of the information highlighted above, there were almost 2.8 million apparent voting violations that exceeded the 90 ballots in error that California was allowed per federal law. In California, every active person on our voter rolls gets mailed a ballot, and ballot harvesting, that is turning in ballots for others, is legal. How can we tolerate having almost 6 million ballots bailed out to questionable registrants? Our voter rolls must contain only legitimate registrations. How can we ever trust in the integrity of our elections if they do not? The resolution outlined meaningful remedies that proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Federal laws already define those remedies. USA is just demanding that our election officials follow the law. The printed copy of the resolution you received cited the many U.S. Supreme Court precedents, federal laws, and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. It was the last page of your resolution. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elected representatives, for support and action. This is a nonpartisan issue. The cost of not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you to put this resolution on the agenda for your next city council meeting. At that time, you can vote to join us in supporting fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dennis?
My name is Dennis Jamison. I'm a representative of the Election Integrity Project of California, and that's been operating since 2010. Year after year, we have presented findings to the Secretary of State, to the Attorney General, to the Department of Justice, to a number of different federal and state agencies, only to be ignored. This is now 2024. We are watching what the United Sovereign Americans are doing, and we understand the realities of what they are attempting to do. And it's very simple. It's not that complicated. We're asking citizens, you are all citizens of this country, to actually weigh in on whether you're okay with questionable election results. The reality is, they may or may not be, according to experts, whether there is fraud or not, accurate. And this is really the question that we're bringing up. And this is based on data research of the Secretary of State's own voter rolls that they publish. We have seen anomalies. We have seen movement in the numbers of people on the voter rolls from one point in time to another. The reality is, this is kind of very strange to us. Not only NEIPCA, but also now you have a resolution for USA. We're just simply asking whether you can support honest, fair, and valid elections. That's as simple as it is. A long time ago, a man said, you're either for me or you're against me. This is all we're asking. Are you for honest and valid elections, or aren't you? That's all.
All right, thank you. Seeing no others? No public comment? Okay, closing, public comment. So it's back to council. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, fine. If not, is this a roll call or just a hand raise?
Hand raises.
Let's do a roll call. It's just, it's just, well, because everybody, yeah, and I see later people saying who voted how, and that's not even how, how they voted. So, okay, let's just do, so Councilmember Marks has effectively asked that this be on, right? So that's what we're voting on, right? Okay, Beth, if you wouldn't mind. Councilmember Brockel?
Yes.
Councilmember Armandares?
No.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
Mayor Blankley? Yes, it's four to three, so, okay. We'll see it next week. Okay, thank you all. Next item is to 10.4, Consideration of a Resolution of the Gilroy City Council Calling for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Is this, this is also, oh, this is Jimmy. Not Bryce, not Beth, Jimmy. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the September 9, 2024 Regular Council Meeting, a future agenda item was approved to be placed on the September 16 Regular Council Meeting. The item in question is a consideration of a resolution of the Gilroy City Council calling for a legally valid 2024 general election. The proposed resolution is attached to your packet, and at this time, the council may amend, adopt, or reject the proposed resolution. That concludes my report. I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to let Councilmember Marks go first, and she is the one who brought this forward. Go ahead.
Yes. Back in our, back in August, we had a group of people come forth to asking if this would be on the agenda. And we have a new agenda policy here, so I thought I would try it out. And I went ahead and put it on the agenda last week because healthy discussions are, are good. And we can have all different points of view, but I would always like to see us be able to discuss it. And when I proposed it last week, I, I said exactly what our city manager said. We could go ahead and accept it as is, or we could reject it, or we could accept bits and pieces of it. And I'm just going to share what I would like to propose, and then I want to have a healthy discussion with you, the audience, and with our fellow city council members. In looking at the proposed resolution, I like the first three paragraphs, and I wish we could have it up on the screen so you could follow along with me. I'm not going to go ahead and reread it, but the first two are the introductions, and then the third paragraph talks about, I need my glasses here, talks about the four tenets of an election that should be upheld. The next paragraph, I, I personally cannot accept because I do not have all the information to say whether the 22 general election had any problems with it. I understand why the group put in data because it was substantiating what they were trying to get across in their resolution. However, once again, I don't want to put my name to something with all this data when I do not have all the facts of the data. So I would suggest that that fourth paragraph be removed. I would suggest the fifth and sixth paragraphs be removed, and we go all the way down to now therefore be it resolved, and change that to now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Gilroy, that we call upon our representatives to provide, let's see, provide, I don't like relief to the people, to provide fair and equal elections. Okay, so I would really like now to have a discussion, you know, with everyone to see what you think. Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Sure. Well, first, I'm, I'm surprised that Councilmember Marks, a couple of things that this even got on our agenda. even got on our agenda. So to hear that you enjoy healthy discussion of items that the public brings to us is a surprise, given the amount of proposals that I've made for things to be agendized for discussion that have been denied by the majority, including yourself. So I'm pretty surprised at that.
Well, we got four votes.
I'm sorry, I'm not done. So, the other thing is that any recognition of this type of resolution with any of the language included is legitimizing it and to me is, is not acceptable. The language in the first through third parag, I'm sorry, the third and the paragraphs thereafter are, at best, vitriol, right? And don't belong in, in, they're not germane to what we're doing as council members, especially when we have agencies, like I said last week, that put up safeguards that contain experts that have actual researchers and reporting, like the Office of the Attorney General, the Secretary of State, the Office of Civil Rights, the Department of Justice. We have safeguards and experts and actual researchers who, who look into this information that pass policy to prevent voter fraud and go after it when it does happen. But it is very rare. And that's why when we hear about it actually happening, it's a very rare occurrence. So I don't support this resolution at all or any iteration of it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just remind everyone that what council member Marks proposed was to omit much of what council member Armandares was just referring to.
I understood what she said. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm just reiterating that because you referred to it again. So it's the first, just the first three things and then just calling for fair elections. Council member Tovar?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So I, myself, I'm surprised this got on our agenda so quickly because we, you know, whenever we present items like this, it, you know, rolls totally may not happen for a while, but this quick turnaround, so I was kind of surprised at that.
It was, it was on the agenda to come back on September 16th.
Right, no, I know, but.
The date was specified.
So I'm not done.
I know, but I'm just telling you the date was specified.
We don't need editorializing yet.
Yes, thank you.
I'm correcting. The date was specified.
If I can finish?
You certainly may.
If I can finish? So, you know, we have a lot of, just, and thank you, councilman Marks, for making those comments, you know, especially not wanting to attach your name to how this is read. I, I respect that because I myself would not want my name attached to this. But the thing that I'm confused about when it comes to this council is, year after year after year, I hear it all the time when we're talking about resolutions where council members say, "No, because it's not in our jurisdiction," right? There's no relationship to Gilroy, this and that. This is making a lot of assumptions. Again, if it was something that was written different and if, if there was legitimate concern, I mean, again, the comments about how the 2022 election was basically rigged, those, that's concerning to me and I think it's divisive and I think it's going to divide this community when we have resolutions like this. But again, for me, I'm going back to what I've heard from many council members is, if it's not part of our jurisdiction, we shouldn't even be voting on something like this. So I, again, am going to vote against it because of that reason as well, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other council members?
I would just say that with the amendments that councilman Marks made, I, I fully back that. It's, it's talking about a concern that we should all have, especially now as we're going into local election, but also state and national. It should be something that we should guard, that, that voting is protected for everybody in a fair way. So some of that language, yeah, I think you're correct in pulling that and so I support that on your, yeah.
Mayor, can I ask another question?
A question? Sure?
Yeah, I guess, well, the comment, I mean, thank you for those, yeah, thank you for those comments. But again, I, I, I think that we already have a fair and equal election, right? I mean, if, if someone can tell me, give me proof that we have not had fair elections, then that's a different story. But I, I don't see how in Gilroy that affects us here, right? So, again, so I, I just could not vote with my conscience in regards to this here because I think that it's, it's implying that, that we here in Gilroy are not running our elections fairly and equally. So again, I would have to disagree with this, so, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I think you also need to realize that we're talking about future elections too. But do our voter registration sheets need to be cleaned up? Yes. One of my friends has a voter registration sheet right now because of the election. We have a, a person voting who was born in 1910. That would make this person 114 years of age. If he or she is alive, I'd love to see them come down to the council chambers so we can honor this person. We've all heard of people who have gotten mail ballots for their children that no longer live in the household. And then we have heard where, you know, well, I have, I have friends in Oregon that still get a California state ballot because they call me up and say, "Hey, guess what we just got?" It doesn't hurt.
Do we have proof of that?
Okay. Let's not interrupt. Okay? It's council member Marks.
Yes, council member, we do have proof of it. I'll be glad to show it to you.
Please.
You know, I, I feel a testiness here. You know, discussion is healthy, but if we don't agree with some of you, you get very upset by it. And you don't know 100% what's actually happening out there. None, none of us do. But all we're saying is, let's keep things fair. We care about our voting system. We're not accusing, we're not saying Gilroy's cheating, but let's just say fair and free elections. Why is that so hard?
I'm gonna hand it up here. Okay, I, yes, I haven't spoken yet, so I'm gonna go. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with council member Klein. Any wording in this resolution that is suggesting that there has been any wrongdoing, I would not agree with. But to just promote fair elections, that absolutely affects Gilroy. We have elections here too. It is the registrar of voters that's responsible for it, so it's not us who does it. But this is absolutely something that, that directly affects us and all of us sitting here. And so to promote them as fair is one thing. To suggest that there's been wrongdoing is something else. And so I'm in agreement with what councilman Klein said and with what council member Marks is proposing, which eliminates all of the language in the proposed, in what was proposed that suggests any kind of wrongdoing. Okay. Council member Armandares?
Sure. So first, I think that the stories that we've heard are anecdotal. If you look on the website of the Secretary of State or the Attorney General and their reports on voter fraud or what was perceived of voter fraud, we have actual data by actual experts who tell us that this doesn't exist. We have our city clerk here, Beth. We have our registrar of voters. We have a whole team of almost 1,000 people at the registrar of voters whose sole job is to make sure that these things don't happen, right? I invite you, if you've never been to the registrar of voters, when they're counting votes, when they're sorting ballots, it is very precise. It is, it is a science, right? And it's been something that, that is highly scrutinized and supervised. So I, I just think it's a waste of time, but it's not victimless. Resolutions like this are not harmless. So number one, it's fear mongering. It's a tactic. To many of us, it's obvious and transparent that these type of resolutions embolden people to discriminate against members of our community who are of different opinions than their own. These types of resolutions snowball into policies. This is not something we should pass so carelessly or even discuss or legitimize so flippantly. We've seen the harmful impact to our democracy that results from these type of policies, from decades of discrimination, from decades of voter suppression. And most recently, millions of people were illegally kicked off the voter rolls in Texas, Georgia, Louisiana. And then a fake website was put up by members of the government of very far-right wing-leaning or voting members of the government. They've put up a fake website for people to re-enroll as, as voters. This is dangerous stuff and it starts with, with seeds being planted like this. So working-class Americans, black Americans, seniors, young Americans, Latinos, they are impacted the most by these type of resolutions and they have been historically for generations. So we have folks who put their lives on the line. We have the Freedom Riders. We have people in our audience today who were out there fighting for voting rights and put their, again, they put their lives and their health and their safety and that of their families on the line to stand up against this kind of stuff that starts like this. So it's not okay. It's not okay for us to take our city back 60 years and our country back 60 years by alleging these things. And if you don't trust the government and government agencies, but you're a city council member, then I have news for you. You are part of this and we have to demand respect and we have to demand trust by acting accordingly.
Thank you. We have 17 speakers, is that right? Okay. Yeah, we have, we have members in the audience on both sides, so that's why we don't do the clapping. This is the safe space for everybody to say what they feel. I've already said it, so I'm not going to repeat that none of us are asserting what council member Armandares just said. So we'll just let that, everybody can take that for what they, what they want. Okay. So Beth, why don't you go ahead and start calling everybody?
Our next speakers are Ron Kirkish to be followed by Connie Rogers and then Erin O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and community. I strongly support and I thank councilwoman Marks and the group that brought this to our attention. This is an important issue. Free and fair elections is the bulwark of our country. And if we don't have those, then we have chaos. We don't have a democracy. To ensure that we have free and fair elections is very, very important. And that's what this group has brought to our attention. And again, I strongly thank councilwoman Marks and those who voted in the affirmative to ask for this resolution. It is important. As far as some of the talk that I've heard, this is not an issue regarding race at all. It has to do with our country having free and fair elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm a volunteer for United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson, and I want to speak in favor of having you, the Gilroy City Council, sign the resolution in support of fair, honest, and legal elections. U.S. citizens and the residents of your community are all impacted if elections are not conducted lawfully. USA is a national organization active in only over 20 states. They are so confident in their data analysis efforts at the voter rolls in each of these states that to date, they have filed lawsuits in nine states encompassing six different federal circuit courts. This is not a partisan issue, nor is an assault on election workers in our county and state. It is a civil rights violation if an eligible citizen voter has their vote diluted by those ineligible to vote. Under the 14th Amendment, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution, the states have to equally protect against denial of the vote and dilution of the vote. Can California prove it has done this? We have shared alarming data found in California. Analysts spent hundreds of hours analyzing the official 2022 voter rolls provided by the Secretary of State and found that a massive number of voter registration did not comply with the standards defined by federal and state law and the Constitution. They used system query language, SQL, also known as system, or SQL, to search through the information on that database. Questions like, how many people have more than one voter ID? It's like your social security number. You should only have one. Questions like, how many registrants are deceased, looking at the death certificates, matching those up to the voters? How many people voted before they were registered? That should never happen. How many registrants have invalid names? Blank names, asterisks, they're not complete names. How many have invalid addresses? They were incomplete, blank, or contained invalid addresses as required by law. Inactive voter status, no voting for several cycles. They are supposed to be contacted to see if they still live at that address and are still an inactive voter in that area. Age discrepant, invalid birthdate, if they're under age, not 18, the age is blank, if they're over 115 years old, those are all records that need to be looked at. How many had their birthplace altered? These were the type of questions that USA looked at. The second question.
I'm sorry. It's, well, darn. I mean, someone else kept going, but, okay, you shouldn't. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Armando.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. I am a representative of Election Integrity Project California. Election Integrity Project California has been operating in California since 2010. I also was a former teacher. I taught at a local community college for quite a number of years. One of the things that I'm amazed about is when kids don't do their homework. You can actually tell when they don't because they're talking off the top of their head, they're making stuff up, pulling it out of their back pocket and laying it out there and presenting it as real. What I've heard tonight from a lot of the speakers is pieces of a puzzle. It's pieces that they heard somewhere along the line, but they didn't do their homework. I just heard something about NEIPCA, which is totally erroneous. I'm not saying that everybody who spoke here was not speaking the truth, but when you hear lies, you have to somehow react. Or you're dead or already brainwashed. In reality, when, when we have looked at every single election since 2010 and come up with irregularities and illegalities and nobody is listening, the reality is that we've taken our findings reports not only to the Attorney General, we've taken them to the Secretary of State, who is supposed to be in charge of the elections here, and without any response, without doing anything, there is no representative government in reality. When people don't respond, all we're doing here in this series of activities is essentially asking you, who are citizens of the United States? I'm a citizen of California, meaning I'm a citizen of the United States too and I'm concerned about the elections, not just across the country, but here in the state of California that we've been examining this time. We urge you to vote yes, to show that you support fair, honest, and valid elections.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Judy Hess, followed by our final speaker, Daniela Ariano.
Hi, I'm Judy Hess and I do live in Gilroy. I do, I am a citizen and I just want to thank you as our representatives for being here every week, every month to represent all of us. So all of us together make up Gilroy. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. And as our public servants, we trust that all of our public servants represent us in our, and I was glad to hear descending voices because that's what made America, America, that we could all have different voices. But what I just heard from a couple of people right now was, and I was shocked, honestly, because I'm one of the people that wanted this resolution to come to Gilroy. And the reason I wanted this resolution to come to Gilroy is because this resolution, and I, I'm guessing that everybody read it, the only thing about this resolution is to follow existing laws. We don't want new laws. We're not telling people to change the law. All we want, all this resolution says is follow the existing law. This has nothing to do, if you read the resolution, and, you know, I have a few friends here, I have a few friends that are, are watching online as well. This resolution, I didn't get in my packet the, the backup of these numbers. I heard you guys did. I honestly don't know. But there are backup that, that shows the numbers here. There's nothing in here that says anything about color. Who cares about what color you are? We're Americans. That's what we care about. I've had people say that I got, I got a ballot for my son who moved out of the state years ago. I got, I hear from people all the time that the ballots are not, they're not correct. And all we're asking is to follow the law. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Any, that concludes?
That's it.
Public speakers. Okay. Then closing the public comment and bringing this back to the city council.
Chair, please.
I'm sorry. Public comment is closed. Yeah. Council member Marks, do you want to say anything or does anybody want to?
Mayor?
Hang, I think she wants to.
Well, go, I'll go after her.
Okay. Council member Tovar?
Yeah, well, thank you for everybody that came here tonight and spoke about this. I mean, it's a very, very important issue that we're discussing here. And for my fellow council members, you know, as we all know, I mean, we were voted in to represent our community, but more importantly, listen to our community and what they felt was best for Gilroy. And a lot of us say, "Well, I want to hear the community. I want to hear the community." Well, the community spoke tonight, right? 14, 15 to 4, whatever the number of votes that spoke, as you can see, there's a difference between, yes, having a healthy discussion, but also seeing kind of the impacts that something like this is going to make in our community. So again, I urge you to, again, listen to the community and vote no on this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember? Councilmember Marks, do you want to go next, because?
Okay, sure. Okay. Well, I know a lot of you had your speeches written beforehand, before, you know, we had talked about some of the adjustments that we would have made to this. To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know which way to go, because I like what Judy Hess said. I agree with that. Only thing we want is just, you know, fair, free, fair elections. It, it has nothing to do with race. It has nothing to do with, you know, any cheating going on. I never thought for a minute that Gilroy, you know, had cheating. It was just something to say, yes, you know, I can support this. Because if I didn't support it, I'd be saying I wasn't for free elections or fair elections. And to me, it was just common sense. I, I already told you how I felt about the data, you know, I, you know, I disregarded it, you know, right off the bat. I, I don't know. I really, I don't know which way I'm going to go, because on one, on one side, I, I hear, you know, I hear what the audience is saying. On the other hand, I really stand behind free and fair elections. And I never for a minute thought that by saying, "We wanted," or "I wanted," a free, fair election, that I was saying that we had illegal elections. That, to me, never, ever came into my thought process. It was like a continuation of free and fair elections, guaranteeing everyone had a right to vote. I never thought of race. I ne, I didn't bring this in as a racist issue. It was just like, I want to protect everyone's votes. And so I don't know. I, well, it needs to have, if we propose this as a motion, it has to be reworded. And then that might be.
See if anyone else wants to talk. And if you want, I will propose a motion, but. Would you like to, you, you brought this forward. Would you like to withdraw it?
Yes.
That's, I, I mean, it's just.
Well, how does the council feel? I want the council to give me input, too. No, I'm not going to be the sole person in saying that.
You're not going to be the sole person. Everybody has to vote.
Mayor?
I want, I want to hear everyone's thoughts on this.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Okay, go ahead. Okay, is that all right? Councilmember Armandares is on the board. Is it okay to go to Councilmember Tovar?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
You talk a lot, Fred, so I get to go, too.
Well, we, we all do.
We all do, yeah. So, question, so if it is law and you don't imagine that there's cheating, and you agree that we do have free and fair elections, then I don't see why we would need a, a resolution to assert that if you don't think that there is cheating. It seems like all this has been for, in vain and a waste of time. And like Fred said, the people have spoken. You know, folks have said, folks, people of color, folks from all different backgrounds and stuff are telling you, are telling us, like, this has an impact on us. This has had an impact on us for, for generations. We would be lovely to have this Pollyanna view of we are all Americans, and we all have the same rights and equity. We don't. We don't, and we haven't. And we can't erase history, we can't deny history, and think that, or pretend that tactics like this haven't been implemented deliberately to suppress the vote of people, to suppress the vote of black and brown people, of disabled people, of LGBTQ plus people for generations. And so I think, one of our members of the audience said, "Let's move forward. Let's make voting more accessible. Let's encourage people to vote." These types of resolutions discourage people from voting. This type of resolutions tell, plant seeds in people's heads that people are cheating. And, and yes, registrar voter employees across the country have been threatened. You know, their, people had to move, people had to change their, their last names. You know, dedicated civil servants who've taken oath of office have been attacked. And we don't want that to happen. And we don't want to, we don't want this kind of stuff to germinate in people's minds and, and be, you know, untrusting of each other as voters. I've registered voters, I've worked at the polls since I was a kid, right? I've worked on campaigns since I was a teenager. I've poured over data, data rolls. I've, I've seen, I've never seen, like, the, the things that, that folks mentioned were evidence of, of voter fraud. Asterisks in people's names, things like that, never. And I was pouring over voter data last night. Hundreds and hundreds of names. I don't see that. I've never come across it. It is really hard to get people to register to vote, and it's really hard to get them out to vote. So I wish we had a problem with people clamoring to vote, you know? I wish that was our problem, but it's not. And, you know, like, like somebody said, we need to encourage people, not discourage them. So I really encourage you, councilmember, to, to rescind this resolution.
You know, I just, as I sit here, and, you know, and I, I agree with what you're saying, I hear you. I just don't see how the words, "in a resolution we want a free and fair election," is offensive to anyone, or accuses elections to be not fair. I just don't see it. It's just, like, say, yes, I, I would, I am shocked by the number of people that came out tonight to talk against it.
Then you should trust them. Hear them and trust them. Okay, let's not interrupt. Thank you.
Yeah, as you would say, I'm talking. So, I don't know. I still need to hear from two councilmembers.
Councilmember Tovar? Oh, Councilmember Bracco. Sorry, my board's changing.
Yes, like Carol, I'm, I'm really not sure what to do on this. I know that the Santa Clara County Registrar of Voters, they're like top-notch, and they do an excellent job. But I also realize there's other registers of voters around that, you know, they don't have the resources, and they, they don't do as good a job. But looking at this with the corrections, it's, like the gentleman that got up at our last meeting and said, "It's simple. Either you're for a legitimate election, or you're not." That's what it, it kind of came down to for me. So, yeah, I don't know, one way or the other. And I do want to correct an individual that got up and said, "I don't return her emails."
Oh, I agree.
I did a search of your name, and I have never received an email from you. So if you want to contact me, you need to call me and see why I didn't get your emails. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Given where we're at currently, Mayor, and given that no one has made a motion to pass this resolution, I would actually like to make a motion to completely reject, reject this resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, is there any other councilmember discussion? Okay, then, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take a vote on that. I just, I just wanted to, to go and say that everybody should be in support of fair elections, and I believe everybody in this audience is, everybody who came to speak. Nobody was saying that there shouldn't be fair elections. Sadly, we, when we get things on the agenda, what goes in the packet, I mean, I don't even get to see in advance, so it just, what went in the packet is not ever, it's not anything that the council said they were considering. It's just what goes in that was submitted by somebody. And so nobody here was ever considering the wording of this, which was the subject of many of the public speakers here. It was the wording that was here, and that was never what we were going to adopt. But as important as it is for everybody to have access to voting, every single person who is eligible, who, who lives here, who is a resident here, to vote, it's just as important that the, that votes are not diluted, as one person said, too, so that they be accurate. And I am not here saying that they aren't. But to promote that they should be, that we would always strive for that, is no different than anything else that we vote to strive for. I personally don't see the necessity of adopting a resolution here on this subject, but I feel that way about much of what others bring forward to the, to this council when it comes to resolutions and, and proclamations. A lot of it is stuff we do because it feels good, and it's not something that we necessarily have to, have to bring. So we have a motion in a second. So we'll take a, take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
Councilmember Blankley, or Mayor Blankley?
Yes, yes, yeah. Let it be withdrawn. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming. That brings us to our next agenda item.